We're here meeting with the City Council Needles Public Utility Authority. Needles, California. Shawn, am I too loud back there? I mean, usually nobody can. Oh, okay. I know. Councilmember Campbell participating via from five to six does not count Needles, California. Call to order.
Councilmember Campbell.
Present.
McCorkle.
Here.
June again.
Here.
Hoag.
Here.
Long break.
Here.
Thank you.
Recede the City Council meeting and convene a joint council and PUA meeting. Public comments pertaining to the executive session items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Recede to executive session. Executive session report by city attorney.
Yes, the council met in closed session. Item A, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957. Title or position, city clerk. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you. We're here meeting with the City Council Needles Public Utility Authority Housing Authority of City of Needles. Will come to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Campbell. She unmute?
Uh-oh, what happened? Is she unmuted?
I got, I got kicked out. Here.
McCorkle.
Here.
June again.
Here.
Hoag.
Here.
Long break.
Here.
Thank you.
We'll all stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then Al will lead the invocation.
I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you.
Excuse that. Thanks for the time.
And we have an excuse the absence tonight for Tana and Kirsten Merritt. Approval of agenda.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
And call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any conflict of interest?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Correspondence.
No.
All right, thank you. Introductions, we have Tim Terrell and Shawn Goodison, both prior City Council. Thank you for attending. And the city attorney, parliamentary procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the council, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. And then lastly, public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council. And as a reminder, the council has adopted a three-minute time limit for public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set into silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance. Persons wishing to address the MP UA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section two dash eighteen. Amendments to the California Government Code section 54950 prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Sheila.
Sheila Miller, two zero two one, Cardi Circle. On January first, twenty twenty four, Ronnie Fregoso threatened my LGBT daughter and her spouse yelling, "You're going to get effed up tonight," except to use the real word. "You moved to the wrong neighborhood. Move out, sell your house. This is our street," along with homophobic and anti-LGBT slurs. These are threats. They communicate bodily harm, and Fregoso, being at least twice the size of my daughter and her spouse, plus living right across the street, has the ability to carry them out. He was joined by Talana Wade, who yelled, "Move out," and homophobic anti-LGBT slurs, and Christina Parrot, who told my daughter and her spouse, "You're not going to make it in this neighborhood." They are joined throughout the night by Talana's husband, Joey Wade, Christina's son, Kane and Parrot, and their New Year's Eve party guests, who joined in the harassment and homophobic taunts. When they weren't swarming my daughter's and her spouse's yard, they were standing in the street in front of and across the street from their house. Gay is not okay. Queers get tears. The police were called seven times during the night. One fifteen AM, two o'clock, two oh four, two twenty one, two twenty six, two twenty nine, two fifty nine. Clearly, my daughter and her spouse were in fear for their safety. The police came once after the one fifteen call but never returned. They stopped calling at three AM, but this does not mean the neighbors stopped with the threats. A police, a report was filed with the police. Deputy Jeremy Reuter, DeRouyter, responded with an email stating that they couldn't see where the neighbors' conduct rose to criminal levels and suggested that they make citizen arrest complaints if there's any issue with loud music or noise. Not only are the police suggesting the victims put a larger target on themselves by making citizens arrests, they're trying to dismiss these terrorist threats and hate crimes to a lower-level noise violation. The city pays SBSO. SBSO works for us, me, you, and every single citizen of the Needles, not just their friends and favorites. The police in Needles do not consider themselves accountable to the citizens. They play favorites with people who are conservative and who fly the blue line flag. They need to do their job and protect everyone in this town. We need Needles to be safe community for all its citizens, regardless of the group they belong to. Until then, we will be sharing videos on TikTok, YouTube, and Facebook. If you want to see them, you can Google small-town bigots. That is, small-town bigots. The videos are complete with commentary and captions, so if you watch it, you can clearly see and hear what was said. There were more than a thousand views in just the first few minutes, and they've been shared not only nationwide but globally. I will say it's interesting that some of the videos need to be edited because those online platforms deem Fregoso's and Wade's taunts threats, but the police can't seem to figure it out. Ronnie Fregoso is guilty of California Penal Code's four twenty two, four twenty two point five five, four twenty two point six, four twenty two point seven, and the police need to do their job.
Presentations, a ten-minute time limit per presentation has been established per municipal code section two dash eighteen. And I'm Deputy Chief of Operations Scott Tuttle, San Bernardino County Fire Protection District, will be making a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Scott Tuttle, and I'm Deputy Chief of Operations for County Fire. You may remember, some of you may remember me when I was the Assistant Chief assigned to this division and basically functioned as your fire chief here in Needles. So it's good to be back. It's good to see some familiar faces. Tonight, I'm going to present on proposed measure W, which has to do with fire protection zone five, FP five. Let's start the presentation. Okay. That's the fire code. Do we have another?
This is the one that I just got today.
Yes.
You have to get a sunrise of your own.
See my car.
I think I emailed you the revised PowerPoint. Patrick.
And Mayor, if you do need to allow the speaker to go out to his car to retrieve it.
Sure.
We could just continue it until after the consent calendar if Patrick can't find it.
I'm sorry, what?
It says revised.
Yes, we could continue it until after the consent calendar.
Okay, we'll do that.
Here, put it, open up the, your email. Yeah.
Okay, we'll go on. Public comments pertaining to the MP UA council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. MP UA council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar considered to be routine will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the MP UA City Council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to MP UA council action, a member of the public may address the MP UA City Council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items two through four on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. Call for the motion?
Call to approve.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
June again.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
End of MP UA consent calendar. During the MP UA, the joint MP UA council meeting convened a joint HACN council meeting. Roll call was previously taken. Public comments pertaining to the HACN council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. HACN council regular items. Accept change order number two, final for the total contract amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and three cents and a total project cost of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and nine dollars, three cents, for work completed by final touch construction for the Needles Housing Authority window replacement project and authorize staff to execute said change order and accept the notice of completion for work.
Yes, Madam Members of the Council in front of you, I'm proud to say that we've got the first capital improvement project for quite some time. Those windows probably haven't been replaced since the nineteen fifties up at the Housing Authority. So we were able to complete the window upgrades for those twenty-six duplexes, fifty-two residential units totaling three hundred and two windows and one hundred and fifty doors. We came in under, so it's always good when we come in. Eight hundred dollars is eight hundred dollars. And so we're very proud of the work that we've been doing. Kathy Roush, working with Angelica Dima and Jesse Fregoso and Case up at the Housing Authority, where, where it's quite a process that started in April, but it's, I'm proud to say that we've concluded this process. And our recommendation is to approve this change order for a contract amount of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and
Presiding officer is responsible.
That total project cost and then completed by final touch and then allow us to execute the notice of completion with the change order.
Thank you. Do we vote on that or? Okay. We make a motion?
I make a motion to approve as read.
Second.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
McCorkle.
Yes.
June again.
Yes.
Hoag.
Yes.
Long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
But June, the Housing Authority of the City of Needles meeting will reconvene the City Council meeting. Roll call was previously taken. Public comments pertaining to the council items. A three-minute time limit per person has been established. Council consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor, any member of the City Council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to the council action, a member of the public may address the City Council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items six through twelve on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote.
Mayor, I believe Chief Tuttle is, his presentation's ready now.
Okay.
Hey, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Take two. Uh-oh. That's it. That's the one.
There we go.
Okay. So as I stated, I'm here to present on proposed measure W, which has to do with FP five. So San Bernardino County Fire Protection District's service zone FP five. FP five or measure, proposed measure W will appear on this year's ballot. And it's a simple yes, no to repeal FP five or not repeal FP five. So repealing FP five will basically get rid of our fire tax and, and it's associated revenue to the fire district. A yes would repeal it, a no would keep it in place and keep our revenue in place. So a little bit about San Bernardino County Fire Protection District. So it's a little over nineteen thousand square miles. Seventy-eight percent of our service area is actually state or federal land. And if you didn't know, the
Agenda.
And property tax. So we don't have any revenue for all the federal land that's out here in our desert. We are a California special district. We are not a department of the county. So a lot of people mistakenly think that San Bernardino County Fire is a fire department of the county. We are a special district, not unlike a school district or a water district, a roads or a park district. We are bound by fire protection district law. In two thousand twenty-three, we received almost one hundred and ninety-six thousand calls for emergency service. Now, this is more than just fires. We also go on emergency medical calls. We go on rescues, hazardous materials, aircraft, marine. We actually have a boat here on the river so we can respond to marine emergencies. What's going on with the PowerPoint here?
One of those, one of those days. Get a new battery.
Skip ahead a little bit. I'll just go through my notes. So a little history on how the City of Needles came into San Bernardino County Fire and the FP five tax also. So the City of Needles was annexed into San Bernardino County Fire Protection District in two thousand sixteen, along with the City of San Bernardino and the City of Twenty-Nine Palms. At that time, the city also annexed into FP five. Since annexation, since two thousand eighteen, we have increased service by staffing up our engine down at Station Eighteen in Havasu Landing. Now, that's forty-five minutes from Needles, but it's also the next closest county fire resource to our city here in Needles. And they respond in, second in for any fires or other emergencies here in the city. So that is an increase in service to the city. All of our fire engines have paramedics on them, which is noted in this slide here. The second paramedic engine down in Havasu has paramedics.
Is it what? The Gintu?
No. Okay. Well.
Taunts. When they weren't swarming.
Oh, what is FP five? There. What is FP five? So it's an annual assessment voted on by the residents in two thousand eight to provide for fire rescue and EMS services by the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District. This assessment was expanded in two thousand eighteen. So remember, two thousand sixteen, the Needles city annexed into the fire district along with FP five. And then in two thousand eighteen, we expanded FP five across our entire borders. FP five currently accounts for almost eighteen percent of county fire's annual operating budget. And it's important to note that this is designated for fire rescue EMS response. So we have different accounts for, say, the fire marshal's office that does permitting inspections, that kind of function. They, that office is funded entirely through those inspection fees. So they don't get any fire FP five money in, in that division. Similarly, we have divisions that have ambulances. We provide ambulance service in some of our communities. And those ambulances bill for service that, that revenue goes back into providing that ambulance service. So this FP five is directly for firefighters on fire engines responding to calls. Two thousand twenty-three, we ran one thousand five hundred and sixteen calls for service in the City of Needles. And then your engine, medic engine thirty-two, ran about fifty more than that. That's calls outside of the city. So out on the freeway, up and down Highway ninety-five. Next slide, please. So how does FP five impact the City of Needles? So revenue must be spent in the zone that is collected. So we can't take money generated here in Needles and spend it in Hesperia, and we can't take Hesperia's FP five money and spend it here in Needles. Currently, the city has one fire station. The gentleman back there in the back row, they're, they're your firefighters. They do an excellent job. They do a great job providing service here to the city and the community. The majority of the funds that provide fire protection here in Needles comes from FP five. It's more money comes from FP five than from property tax and our, and our revenues. Next slide, please. So what's projected to happen if FP five is repealed? So there's currently no replacement revenue for FP five. If we lose FP five, there's no identified revenue to replace it. So Station Thirty-two here in the city is significantly funded by FP five. So without FP five, we would face possible reduction in staffing level, possible loss of paramedic service. Like I mentioned earlier, we have paramedics on every one of our fire engines. That may be decreased. An expected increase in response times and a decrease in service and increase in response times could lead to increase in insurance premiums. Next slide. What is projected to happen if FP five is not repealed? We would maintain the current service level here in the City of Needles. Maintain current staffing and fire engine response. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So with these two, this is how you get your funding and it stays here locally, which I think is amazing because of where we're at. Now, when you have help from Mojave Valley, Fort Mojave, Bullhead to assist in fires or accidents, I think it's mostly like fires. Do you have to reimburse them for that kind of service?
Not generally. So we work off a mutual aid system. So we respond over there and help them on fires, and they respond over here and help us on fires. No single community can handle every emergency that they may face. Even in our large metropolitan areas and down in the valley, we still utilize mutual aid for those large fires that are beyond any one fire department's capability.
And then just to clarify real quick, if we, to vote no means you keep the funding?
Correct.
Okay. Just, I know it gets confusing sometimes. They make it confusing on purpose, but okay.
I have a question. So if it is voted to be repealed, so then the city would have to go into funding the fire department again or?
So we would have to reduce services. As, as you remember, the city is not, doesn't contract with county fire to do that service. We annex your fire authority into the fire district. So it's our responsibility to provide that service.
If you watch it, you can clearly see.
And there would just be a reduced service, longer response times. As far as if the city could pay more to, to provide those services, that would have to be negotiated, some kind of
Contract. This ballot measure, is it going out to all the cities or just those that are contracted with the San Bernardino?
So every city that the fire district provides coverage in.
Oh, okay. You know, when you get called down on the freeway for a semi or accidents and stuff, so do you bill that person, that party you went out there to? Or is that just part of?
It is just part of the service that we
Oh, I see.
We can bill insurance for certain types of incidents. If it's illegal or negligent.
Right.
But it's, it's really a fraction of what it costs to provide that service.
Okay.
We can and we do bill insurance companies or a responsible party if
I see.
It's illegal or negligent.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes. So how is the FP five funded? Is it funded out of our property taxes? I kind of didn't hear.
Yes, yeah. It's a line item on your property tax bill.
So on an average home of seventy-five thousand dollars?
So it's, it's a flat fee regardless of property value, whether it's improved or unimproved. And I don't have the number off the top of my head. It's right around a hundred and sixty-some dollars.
One sixty-eight.
One sixty?
Dollars a year.
Sixty-eight. That's not bad insurance for fire coverage.
Yeah. So are you bringing out, you know, posters and stuff that we can, you know, get out in the public to?
Yeah.
Spreading this or?
District, we cannot campaign.
Oh, I can't, oh, I see.
Argue for or against any ballot measure. I'm just here to provide information and answer any questions.
Okay.
Or an educational piece.
All right.
Yeah, there are some, some groups out there. The firefighter, Professional Firefighters Association is, is out there. They, they have that ability to campaign, so they're out there. And private citizens can obviously campaign or spread the word or, or camp, you know. Argue for.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
And I'll be, I'll be sticking to the whole meeting. So if anybody has any additional questions, whether it's council members or somebody from the audience, I'll be here to answer.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're back. Motion for the council consent calendar.
I have two. I would like to pull ten and eleven just for some conversation. No.
Okay. Okay.
Right, so you had, no problem. Number ten, so the adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash six approving category exemption for the proposed golf course irrigation efficiency project. So we were successful in acquiring a grant for the golf course where we were going to do some improvements that would require one hundred and seventy-five new water efficiency peaker heads to replace the tees at the green boxes and basically do a redesign of the insulation of these. Because the funding was grant-related, we needed to complete a notice of exemption. We hired TK Engineering, and they did find that under the California Environmental Act, we do qualify for an exemption. So basically, this is to allow us to do improvements on our property without having to go through an environmental study. And so basically, this is just stating that we, we are free and we're clear and there's no bugs or bunnies that are going to be impacted and no pollution in the air that's going to be harmful to this project. So our recommendation is approving the category exemption for the proposed golf course irrigation efficiency project phase one. Well, next to rule number eleven.
Yes.
All right, Madam Members of the Council in front of you, we, we need direction from you all to move forward with Route sixty-six drive-through arch along Front Street. This is the mayor's agenda item, so I'm going to give her an opportunity to really talk on it. But I wanted to, what I need from you is direction on, on the location tonight. And so, Madam Mayor, do you want to talk on it?
I did bring this up for the importance. Twenty twenty-six is the hundredth anniversary of Route sixty-six. Route sixty-six is a viable economic driver for our tourism here in Needles. And we are on a number of Route sixty-six sites and towns along from Illinois to California all have some type of a drive-through sign. You know, cities smaller than ours, cities larger than ours. They're either, you know, a one-way or just like a photo op-type sign. And Jesse Fregoso, utility public works manager, he and I went down and we had a couple of different locations, and it seemed the train park was probably the best. The frontage road is already there. It's, we've got the, the train cars, our flag, and we've got the little, you know, rest stop area. Plus, we have the veterans. And then also Arrowheart, the foundation of Arrowhead is going to donate seven new flags that will go and circle behind our veteran signs. So it's generally going to be a really nice park. Then we feel it'll be a nice walking tour from the El Garcia's Front Street to the train park. And we just thought it would be one more adage, you know, for our Route sixty-six drive-through. And Patrick did go up to Kingman Legacy Signs, did that sign about three years ago for ninety thousand. That's where we figured that one does have neon. There is no electric there, so we'd have to, I thought we could also have sundown signs, give us a bid too. So between those two, you know, get bids and ideas, what, you know, the most feasible idea for us to be. But the less infrastructure and not having to pave another road for this project, the train park seemed to be to fit the best. And then they could come off J Street, you know, drive through there, you know, either way. And then we also have the Rock Club down there also too, which is really popular. the Rock Club down there also too, which is really popular. So that was our decision for the location there.
And and just briefly, the as pointed on the staff report, the the mayor has requested authorization for city staff to solicit donations. Similar to the fire truck, we would have a general fund line item dedicated to the donations of this item. And so we would use donation dollars to do engineering and to move this forward. And so I just want to make that clear to you all.
So and the location. I mean, I love the idea of the sign. Don't get me wrong. I've loved it since they put it up. But I even called their tourism and asked, you know, how 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 would we go about getting it? So for the sign, I know that when I had talked to I think it might have been Travis, not sure, and Kingman a couple of years ago when they put theirs in. And he told me who awarded it. They already did the sketch. So I'm hoping that since they already have, that's the same exact one that you're thinking that you would like.
Right.
That that would cut down costs because they're not having to do that. But the location. I I like the location. The only thing I wonder, would we have to do a traffic study or anything on that location?
Well, because the the arch would be strictly on the frontage road. It's already, the road is already there, the sidewalk, the arch would be there at the road and then just arched over that.
Okay. I mean, I I don't hate that. I'm just wondering, like, too, because I see Kingman's every day, gets a little bit backed up. And I we don't get a lot is we don't get half the traffic Kingman's getting right now. Just wondering if that might create any issues.
No, because they they could enter from either way. They could enter from coming east or they could enter from just coming underneath the underpass too.
So would the the arch would span?
Yes.
Okay.
It wouldn't span on Front Street. It would only, that's why we picked that location. It would only span the frontage road. Where there's that side road, the front road right in front of it, and then there's Front Street. It's going to go on the frontage road part. We were trying to think the most logical, that would be the less we thought about at the end of the train cars, but then that gets into Santa Fe and Santa Fe didn't want any exposure, you know, to kids or cars getting close to the truck.
Sure, sure.
So.
And and briefly also, if we needed, the dimensions you have are in your folder.
Yeah.
And so this is Kingman sign. So if we need to accommodate the size of the sign to to fit into that area. It made, it made, the proposal was brought forward by Jesse Fergoso because basically you've already got an apron there, you've already got a driveway there. We don't need to make any other improvements. More or less improvement. So obviously through the building permit process, we would need to ensure that the 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 traffic is not impacted. So we would, we would do that analysis through the building permit process. Because obviously, we don't want to put a sign up that's going to impact traffic or it's going to hit cars are going to hit it because then it's just another.
Or maybe we're going to have to widen a road or do anything where it's going to, you know, cost a lot more money when we've trying to get donations for this.
Well, we also thought there's that sign right across from Conno Smog that has a circle, kind of like a circle drive, but then it's beyond land, the NSF property, and we're going to have to put a road in. You know, asphalt, the rock, and then it would be encroachment into the the rail yard. And then we'd have to do fencing to protect. So it's kind of the most logical, the fencing that it's not going to get into, you know, the railway.
Yeah. Okay.
And so I need, so that's, that's, if you have no more questions, we're going to recommend approval of the location so that we can start solicitor, there can be solicitations that take place for the installation of this Route sixty six themed novelty drive-through sign located on Front Street at the train park.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion then to to for the for the items that are?
I make a motion to approve
This looks through twelve.
The six to twelve consent calendar.
A second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes, long break.
Yes.
Thank you.
End of regular consent calendar. Regular council items. Award to twenty twenty four edible food recovery grant. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor Members of Council. Tonight, we have in front of you a really unique opportunity. Through the city of Needles is required under Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three to do organics waste reduction, which composes of organics composting, but it also includes a piece for edible food recovery. The city does have an organic waste disposal waiver, which is great. It's a five-year waiver. So the city staff has been focusing on edible food recovery in the city of Needles as part of a compliance piece. We are a part of the Mojave Desert Joint Powers Authority, which has provided us a five thousand dollar grant that we can in turn just be a pass-through agency to a local nonprofit to help them with their edible food recovery, which in turn we utilize their data to report to CalRecycle how much
Completed by Final Touch.
Annually. This is the third year that we've received the funding. The first two years, we have provided the funding to St. Vincent. But over the past year, we've seen a huge increase in edible food recovery in the city through multiple agencies and organizations. So we staff created a proposal form that we provided, and I'll have those applicants, can I say one representative from each group come up? To St. Vincent Firehouse and Set Free. They are largest local nonprofits that do edible food recovery. Each of them in your packet provided a proposal on what they would do with the funds. The funds are to be used to support just their overall operations. It could be you'll see in the proposal, it could be vehicle fuel, electric cost over the duration. It could be a wide range of funds. So we could take a short minute, if you would like, each applicant to come up and give a little overview of their proposal. And then at the end, you council can choose to select one applicant, you can select all three, you can select two. We're hoping to be able to do this again year after year. So this is up to you at the end of this. So we'll go ahead and start with.
George, day on six thirty-seven Lagoon Street. I'm the store manager at Sephens DePaul Beer Store and Food Bank on eight three nine Front Street. With this proposal, edible food recovery proposal, I mean, it's short and sweet, it's basically pick up food safely. Storage, storing the food safely and distribution of food safely to the residents of Needles and to my state area. Or safely means we have to watch the temperature, duration is exposed, how we receive it, if it's bad when we receive it. And we've been doing this for some years now. We're getting real good at that. Those edible food generators, we have Little City Walmart. Tuesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays, we go pick up a load of food from Walmart. Little Caesar's on Hancock. Tuesdays, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, we pick up pizza. St. Mary's Food Bank Network. The second and fifth Tuesday of every month, we pick anywhere between eight, eight to ten pallets of food and deliver to my store. About half of us, we share food all the time with each other. The Community Action Partnership of San Bernardino County. Once a month, there's a Thursday, Wednesday of every month, they'll bring me anywhere between three to four pallets of food that we separate in our store and distribute. Proposed record-keeping of edible food recovery. Basically, we're doing this with Walmart already. When we get all the food, we weigh it and we categorize it by bakery, twenty-five pounds produced, forty-five pounds, whatever it may be. It's a lot more than that, but those are simple numbers. Proposed use of the funds, we have a large walk-in cooler. We have a large walk-in freezer. And of course, our facilities and the maintenance of our two big trucks. So it would help us maintain these because those days we go to three days a week, we go to this old Bullhead Walmart, and four days, we go to Hancock to pick up all that pizza. Any questions?
Yes. How many, how many pounds do you distribute a year?
You know, I was going, I almost brought that with me because I got a recognition from St. Mary's and they they had it on there. But basically every day, five days a week, we average seven people coming to my store and get food. We make them sign up. And that's just one program. And then we have the thirty-day program. We have the San Bernardino Commodities Program. But basically, my store, five days a week, at the front of the store, no ID required, just come get food. And of course, what we do, we want to share the share the wealth. We don't, you know, we watch for the news, for the needy, not the greedy. And we make sure people share the food that we have. And when we have a lot, we give a lot. When we're a little tight, we get, we'll pick you on how, we just make sure we get some. Any other questions?
Do you, you have a health certificate and you're a food?
Yes, I have a food hammer's card.
Yes. So that that is required by that.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any else? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Danny from Set Free Church here in Needles. And okay, I'm the secretary over there. And I don't know, I think most of you are familiar with us. If you're not, we're a residential discipleship program. So we have people that live on site, but we also have people that come in from the community, like we're open twenty-four seven. So whenever people are hungry, we have three meals a day, breakfast, lunch and dinner. And we also make food boxes, prepare food, and hygiene, anything else that people might need that we might have. So we do have a few different places that, you know, we have a bread run that we get some bread every every week and some food banks that will call us to come pick up food. But we we plan on being able to target more locally within the city. Like the hotels or the fast food or just anybody that has a large amount of food that can be consumed in because we have a lot of hungry people that come in. So that's what we're hoping to do. And for we already have a pretty accurate log of, you know, what comes in and what we take out. And when people come, they don't have to use ID or or any kind of, you know, if you're you're hungry, we got you. We will feed you. So if you need something, we're there for you. So and this is all the time. So but we plan on making it a little stricter, you know, to so we can actually keep a total account to make sure that we we comply with the records that they're requiring at the end of the year to show how much food that we're able to put in the mouths of hungry, needy people. So and that's, is there any questions?
Yeah, same same questions, basically. How much how much poundage do you do?
You know, and and like I didn't bring, I don't have any of that information with me, but I know that we have we did a food grant like not too long ago, and it was it was in the thousands a little bit, like around.
And you have a health certificate too?
Yes, we do.
And you have freezers and?
We we have a large amount of freezer space and refrigerator space. So everything is able to you know, if it needs to be locked up in a dry area, we have that. It needs to be frozen.
So basically, your food goes to your residents that are there, correct?
Well, it goes to our residents and the community. We get people in all day, every day, that they come in, they get bread, they get meat, eggs, cheese, like whatever we are able to have, we pass it out to the community. And we also, you know, have we have three meals a day? And people are welcome to come in and eat with us.
If anybody could just come in and eat.
And even it doesn't even have to be at the set time that they come in and they're hungry, we'll make them something.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Pastor Jim, pardon me, Pastor Jim Jones, Firehouse Ministries and Isabel's Food Bank. Pleasure seeing you guys in this forum rather than the others. Isabel's Pantry and Addie's Pantry gives away on average of a million pounds of food a year. We collect food from many different sources, one being Walmart Fort Mojave, Smith's Fort Mojave, Safeway Fort Mojave, Starbucks Fort Mojave, Dollar General, both here in Needles and the one right on the other side of the bridge. Pizza Hut Fort Mojave, Wagon Wheel Needles. All these source, all these food streams that come in, get categorized, get stored in appropriate storage and then get given out on a weekly, if not daily basis. We serve approximately a hundred families every Thursday. Hundred families equates to about four hundred people. If you equate out a family equals more than one person, of course, it usually equals out to be about four. And so we're serving about four hundred people a week. And that's three hundred, that that's every every week, every every year. And this has been this process started seven years ago. We are fully accredited San Bernardino County Health Department Food Recovery entity. They came out, they inspected us, and we are in their program now. And we have been, they came out last year and we got into their program. We are fully accredited with Food Hammer's Card, Cards and Facility Managers Certificate. We serve on average of thirty meals a week to the homeless throughout Needles. Those those products are the the homeless feeding program is prepared and then taken to the people in our in our community. And we just look forward to expanding this. We operate four vehicles, two commercial freight trucks and two light commercial utility trucks. We operate a forklift. We operate a trailer through the generosity of this council or and and a previous council, some of them sitting down here in the audience that we got grants for through the community block back pro, block grant programs in the past.
Bernardino and the city of Twain and Paul.
We look forward to, oh, and we, before I move on to that, we have a fully operational walk-in refrigerator. And I've just got completed in December, late November, early December, a large commercial walk-in sub-zero freezer. So we have the, we have one of the largest food handling capabilities in Needles. And I think St. St. Vincent's is right there along with us to handle this food, to handle these, the products that come in and to move them along to the customers. We partner with Food for Families in Bullhead, which is our sister agency. And of course, St. Vincent's downtown, we share resources. And what I can't handle, I give to them. And what they can't handle, they call me. So all this, all this leads to a a system in Needles that's reliable, that is safe and is equitable and fair. Not only we serve Needles, but we serve the tri-state area. We see people from Nevada, which is Laughlin. And we see people from on the other side of the border also. Some twenty percent of our customers that come through are not Needles residents. They're outside of Needles. So we are about eighty percent of that number I just gave you is Needles residents and about twenty percent of that number is from across the river. We are an affiliate a of St. Mary's Food Bank, which is the largest food bank system in the world. And part of that million pounds of food, the the lion's share of that million pounds of food a year comes through St. Mary's Food Bank in one form or fashion. We are also a partnering partnering agency with Feeding America, which is very heavily involved in the state of California and throughout the United States as part of the grocery rescue program, which is this, what we're talking about tonight. So we we are totally funded by the generosity of individuals and through grants like this. We just had a new-to-us engine put in one of our freight trucks and the cost of it was ten thousand dollars. And that may sound like a lot of money, but it was actually pretty cheap because the replacement used engine should have cost about twenty-five thousand dollars. But because of good relations in this valley and good relations with neighboring agencies, this one in particular was Big D's Towing and and Diesel Mechanic Service. They basically gave us the engine and charged us to put it in. So this is a community effort. We service the community, not only our community, but the but the the larger community. And we work very hard at doing this and we appreciate your guys' help. As far as record-keeping, record-keeping, we use the St. Mary's Food Bank's data entry system. And it and we do everything's, everything that comes through is weighed. We have a commercial scale. Everything gets weighed. Everything gets categorized into, I think it's eight different categories. It gets entered into that database, that database. And at any given moment, I can pull up a report and tell you exactly where the food came from and it went to. It it's tracked. The food that is not usable or not edible does not go into the trash can. We now have a compost, we've now have a composting system that that where the non-edible food that's gone past the useful stage for humans either goes to compost or it goes to a neighboring pig farm over in Mojave Valley. And, or actually, it's not really a farm, it's a, it's some folks that raise pigs. So, but I guess that's a farm. So there is zero waste coming from our facility. All cardboard, all the cardboard that comes in gets a hundred percent recycled. It gets cut down, boxed up and it gets sent back to Phoenix. The truck comes with food, it gets empty and then the cardboard and recyclables gets loaded back on the truck and it goes away to be recycled. So nothing from our facility, and that's what this grant is about. It's about using food in an appropriate way and about not seeing food go into landfills or all products associated with food going into landfills, which is cardboard, plastics and things of that nature. And we are meeting that goal. We've been meeting that goal now for about four years. So I would appreciate any help that this community could give us and if you have any questions, please.
Hey, Jim, um, thank you. I would like you to share with the council and the community what it is you do with, like, what do you do to, when you get all this fruits and vegetables and what other sort, what other things do you do with food to preserve it longer and distribute it?
Well, as part of this program, pardon me.
Just the canning, we'll make it simple.
Yeah, yeah. As part of this program, what we do is, as part of our kitchen, we go ahead and take the food that is right on, it's not, it's not bad, but we just can't bring ourselves to send it to the compost pile or to the, to the pig farm because at, at the end of our food bank, if we have, say, ten pounds of blackberries left over and they're not going to make it to our next food bank and we don't have somebody standing there saying, oh, I want those blackberries. We go ahead and take those blackberries, we produce a product out of them and it's a blackberry jam or a blackberry jelly and then it gets canned, it gets labeled and then it either gets given away or you gets, gets used in the community. And I think some of that, that jam or jelly went to a, went to a county supervisor not too long ago, but then it Ellen? I think so.
Representative.
Yeah, there we go. So we are, we are committed to zero waste. I do not have one of those big blue dumpsters sitting in front of my, my church or, you know, the big metal ones. I don't have one of those. Everything we do is geared towards using this, this products as the best we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. God bless your kids.
Um, I, I'm just so appreciative that we have these three services to service our community here for those in need to feed, clothe and shelter and to help with the homeless and just our citizens in need also. In, in saying that, I, I just think they're all three worthy of receiving, you know, this grant. And I, I would like us to give Saint Vincent 2000, Firehouse 2000 and Set Free 1000. I think it should be split. I know we're in for a tough year this year economically and I know they are too. So it's, you know, it's up to the council to decide, but I really feel that way. I feel very strongly about all three of them. They are great service stars too.
I'm commenting, um, so we get to have a conversation. So giving back to the community in large droves and that has been in large droves. I'm looking just for the passion to kind of compensate for vehicle usage. This money is a lot, but we do have two places that get a lot of donations from other places. So I would like to see the money go fifty-fifty between Addie's Pantry and Saint Vincent's. They do a lot of back and forth travel. I think this will help with vehicle costs or however they use it, but they do do a lot of vehicle cost maintenance and storage electricity for those freezers that they do have in the refrigeration. So that's my input.
Okay. Is there a motion or?
No, my, my input's Firehouse Ministry and Saint Vincent de Paul fifty-fifty.
I was thinking divided equally by three.
Okay.
So. Somebody wants to make a motion and see if they can get a second.
Yeah.
I made a motion to.
Oh, Ellen. Oh, Ellen.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. You're done. You can do it.
Okay, I want to make a motion to fifty percent for Firehouse Ministry, fifty percent for Saint Vincent de Paul.
I'll second that motion.
I'm calling for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Pogue?
No.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Hey, this has to do with spending.
Order for payment of money for votes.
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, he failed.
That failed. So there, there, just to explain there, there are three times where four affirmative votes are required. One is a passage of an ordinance, one is passage of resolution and the other is for the order for payment of money and those require four affirmative votes. So another motion can be made. The other thing is if, if you want to reconsider that motion, then it would have to be, the motion would have to be made by one of the, one of the, well, I guess you're the only one that voted against it, right?
I am.
So it would have to be you.
Yeah.
But alternative motions can be discussed and considered and voted on.
I'd like to make a motion. Are we allowed to make a new motion now?
Yes.
Okay, so my motion is going to be two thousand, two thousand and one thousand, two thousand Firehouse Ministries, two thousand to Saint Vincent de Paul and one thousand to Set Free. As originally suggested we might do.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Longbreak?
No.
You can call the applicants back up here if you've got any additional questions to help get you guys through, you need to go, you can, you can do that also if you'd like to re-interview them. But at the end of the day, we, we are going to need a first and a second to, to be able to move this forward.
We have.
And a successful motion.
I'd like to call Set Free back up. Oh, just, yeah, just explain a little bit more, Danny.
Okay, um, what I should have said in the beginning also is to, is that, you know, because I was kind of focusing more on locally around here, but we also do get donations from Yucca, we get from Yaquipa, from Beaumont. And we also do have a large amount of vehicle expenses, gas expenses and things that we need to keep maintained. And, you know, we, we do everything possible to get whatever.
Over there and help them on fires and they respond over.
Help and it's, it's, it's very important to us because it's not just a, you know, one day we're on the corner passing stuff out or whatever. It's, it's no matter what the day, no matter what the time, whether we're having church, whether we're having any kind of functions, people can get whatever they want whenever they need. And it's just important for us to be able to supply that to them, whether it's hot or cold. I mean, they get hot meals too. It's not just passed out, our, our meals can be cooked and they can sit down and have a meal like a family. So.
Thank you.
There, I have a question. Oh, sure. Um, so when you're passing out these meals or the food that you get, how much of it goes to non-church members?
Um, just, I mean, we, like, when, when we have donations, it is, you know, there's, whatever we have, it gets put into the fridge and if people come in and they need something, they can get it. Because we on the other side can come together and put donations in ourselves to buy stuff from the store. But whatever we get is for the community first.
Okay, and then how, how do, and this is because I don't know. So how do residents here locally know that they're able to go in and get items from you?
Well, we have, you know, like we're on Facebook, we also have our thrift stores on Facebook and whenever we get huge, large donations or any kind of donations, it's posted all over Facebook and it's, you know, by word of mouth. But this is Billy and she's our kitchen food lady. Would she be able to address it?
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Back to your previous question about how much is being given from, we don't do it by only four, you know, so say your household comes in. I'm not sure how many of you guys have, but the minimum it would be like four, the amount for a four person. You, you let us know if you have like seven kids and your aunt and stuff, we will be able to accommodate you. When we do have the means of how many other people you have, every day, you can come in every day if you need to as well. You know, if we don't have it, you come back and we'll have it the next day. It just all depends, but whatever you need, we'll give it. We will not give a limit to any family member and a family that comes in. You know, if you need it, we will give it if we have the means to. And for the box, it's about thirty, thirty plus a day, depending mostly on the weather, you know, because a lot of them do walk. So when they do come in, we give it out, like, like she said, it's all day. It's not a certain amount, a certain time of day. It's all day, morning, noon, night, you know.
Thank you.
I have a question. You get food from Yucca, you said?
Yes.
And what, what place is that from?
Yucca is from Arizona.
Now, what, 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 what's the name of the place there? Yucca food, aren't they Saint Mary? But isn't that Saint Mary? But, but Saint Mary is, is a contractor with them, correct? Yeah, are you a contractor with Saint Mary?
Um, no.
If you're not a contractor of Saint Mary, you can't bake something that's a contractor with Saint Mary to your food bank. So I was just wondering if that's what it was.
It's, it's the other churches that give it. I mean, not necessarily contract. If I can speak freely, you know, when it comes from churches, from each different church, for whatever, non-denominational, that's how we see ourselves and that's how we should see each other's as a community. You know, it shouldn't matter what church, where it comes from, if we're willing to help each other's and.
No, I, I understand that, but that's how Saint, Saint Mary says that your, the rules and regulations on that. And from what I understand, they're Saint Mary, but I just wondered if you were. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I wanted to make a suggestion, Mayor.
Yes.
If the council is, as currently composed is at an impasse, if the two no votes, which would be Councilmember Longbreak and Councilmember Pogue would be willing to reconsider the motions that were made that they voted against at the next council meeting, when you have everybody present, that might be a way to break this down. Just a suggestion for you to consider.
All right. Or should we try equal everybody to, all three divided equally?
That a motion?
I propose that we go that route, divided equally among the three. I see heads nodding.
Second or?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Yep. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Longbreak?
No. So what about the idea of continuing the item, if we can continue it to the next meeting? You'll have two, you'll have two more councilmembers present if, well, but it would only be helpful if the no votes, which would be you and Councilmember Pogue voted no on some items, if you would be willing to reconsider the motions that failed today and then you could go through them in order. Rainey could walk you through the motions that were made and you can vote on them again.
Well, I'm willing to reconsider the one that just failed.
Mayor, we, we, in the staff report, we have not received these funds. There, there is no urgency tonight. If you guys would like to think on it and bring them back, we could definitely do that. Funds will not be released till end of February, maybe even March.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to, to continue with that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Call for the vote to continue this to the next meeting.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What happens if I say no?
Stop it.
It would, it would actually pass. Because it's not one of the three that require a four vote.
Okay, wait for me to adopt a resolution 2024-5, continuing Councilmember McCorkle as representative to MDA, QU, QMD and appoint an alternate.
Staff.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have a vacancy due to the resignation of Councilmember Longbreak on the MDA QMD, so what I need from you tonight is an appointment to the commission so that we can have a full set of representatives at the MDA QMD. And so we're appointing an alternate tonight.
I'll do it.
Oh.
I'll do it.
It's going to be the same process, so we need a first and a.
Okay.
I make a motion to nominate the mayor as the alternate.
I'll second it.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yeah.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Name Jack Smith walking trail after Marilyn Hostet Matthews.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we, on, on June twenty, uh, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, city council adopted a set of policies and procedures that we go through with the naming of a location, city-owned property, buildings, facilities here in the city of Needles. At the last council meeting, the mayor requested that we put this on the agenda for the naming of the Jack Smith Park Walking Trail after Marilyn Hostet Matthews. So Marilyn Matthews has been educated for forty years. I don't, I want to let the mayor talk about this because this is her. I know I'm not letting the mayor, but I suggest that the mayor talk about her.
I appreciate that. Anyway, gosh, I think it's been years now. Marilyn has come before the council, numerous club meetings with her big binder of a walking trail from Lagoon to Jack Smith Park. And, and countless days, it doesn't matter what type of weather it is, you'll see her out here walking. She's very generous with supplying Needles with trees. I know all of the ballparks have been recipients of her trees and she just generally cares about Needles, longtime Needles family. You know, all of them have been educators in our system and have given generously back to the, to the city. I just feel it's very appropriate to name this walking trail after her. We'll go down there and see her walking, taking loops around it. That's my story there.
So tonight I just need direction and we would put it on consent next time around, but basically the criteria is it's a person or organization with longstanding affiliation, which she does. The, the name provides a sense of place reflecting the geographic location, which staff believes she does. The name recognizes historical significance of the area and reflects unique characteristics of the site. The name of the person's organization, corporation, but it will be considered when they have made a significant contribution to, by the city. And so that's been outlined by the mayor previously. So if the individual must be a significant contributor to our community in terms of improvement of quality of life. So what we need from you is a, provide staff direction. We'll put this on consent next time.
I make a motion to put it on consent next time.
A second. Call for the vote.
We should all second.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
McCorkle?
Yes.
Pogue?
Yes.
Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing on appeal of city's notice of revocation of cannabis business license permit for the following cannabis business. This hearing has been continued to February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. This was for information. City attorney report.
Yes, just briefly, some of the things that we've been working on are representing the city in a dispute with Rio Buena Vista HOA. Hopefully that'll be wrapping up and so we're hopeful. The leak that had occurred at, at Rio Buena Vista. The leak that had occurred out at Rio Buena Vista has been repaired by the HOA, is our understanding. The also representing the city in a dispute with MIH-related entities. And we continue to work with them on a possible settlement. We have a settlement that's in draft form and being exchanged between the parties. So hopefully we'll have that to you soon. And I and I think we will. I think that we'll have something that will come back to you. We're still, we're still negotiating some of the finer terms of it. And then also working with staff and Michael Bracken on looking at potential amendments to the city's cannabis ordinance related to, which would have to go to the voters, and it would be your your tax ordinance. And then also representing the city on numerous code enforcement matters and receivership matters. We have about eleven receivership cases. And then we have several cases, cases that are in the process of having receivers appointed. And then also assisting the city in sending out a couple notices of intent to revoke cannabis licenses for operators that have unpaid cannabis taxes owed to the city. And then assisting staff with legal research for the Needle Cemetery. Also assisting with public contracting matters, public records matters. And continuing to assist in connection with issues related to the Needles Housing Authority. And then as needed, advising either council members or staff on Brown Act questions that arise or conflict issues. And then we continue to represent the city in litigation adverse to Manassian, where we're seeking specific performance of a contract related to the city's sale of the downtown property near the El Garsas. And then also advising the city on employment matters as those arise. That's my report.
Thank you. Uh, city clerk.
On our website now, all of the agendas for all the boards and commissions are in the usual place. But it's all linked in one continual feed. So when you go in there, you're going to find planning commission, city council, park and rec. But they're done by date, but you can search there. And what's good about it is when you search, once we get more and more agendas in the system, it will search multiple meetings. So if you type in cannabis, if you went to planning commission, it will pull up that meeting. If you went to council, it will pull up that meeting. So there's, there's links between it. So we're, we're working on that. It's implemented now. The city code is being refreshed. And I will be getting some having a conversation with Civic Plus on Thursday at eight AM to clarify a few questions because they have a few questions on some, they need clarity on some ordinances. I still commits to the planning commission and housing commission. We support their agenda, distribution, posting on website, et cetera. Working on numerous records requests. The presidential primary election is March five. We're going to put the flyer and some information on our website so you can go to city clerk's office, type, type in election. And you'll get some deadlines on the March five election. And that's, that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City manager.
Yeah, so I want to celebrate a couple of things tonight. Then I've got some things that we need to alert the public about. But first, the street improvement projects, yes, we are moving forward on them tonight. You did approve and it was on consent and we'll work on that in the future.
Larger than ours.
The street projects are ongoing and we continue. Everybody asks, when's my streak going to be done? Please don't hesitate to have them reach out to myself, Rainey Torrance, or Kathy Roush. Because we want to continue that moving forward, right? And so we have a full intention of moving that forward. As you recall, last November, we had to reject the bids that were provided because the water lateral section of the bid was high. And so I want to celebrate that tonight. Maybe I'm prematurely celebrating, but it's, you know, we'll take the ones where we can get them. But tonight, we, with the water radars, we were able to come in lower than we had done originally by putting them together. So we are moving forward with the street improvement project. We are starting with the water radars that are taking place tonight. Here's the streets that are, the the two areas we're finishing up. The areas of Sabilla and Desnac and, you know, all those areas. And then over up at the school district, they're never going to move up into the vistas. And again, we, as soon as we have money, we're going to move forward with this, right? And so it's a general fund problem that we're trying to solve annually by at least putting two million dollars plus, which was recommended by the engineer to move forward. So we are making this a priority. And I want you all to know, we are moving forward with it. And this is something that the council does want us to do. And so I want to share with you and celebrate. And so the next step will be going out to bid for the actual asphalt that we need to rebid for the project. And so that will solidify the project and and move this section forward so that we can move on to the next phase. Potentially next year, looking at revenues. So we want to make sure that we've got the money before we spend it. And so that's, that's how we, that's how we connect our business. And so I just want to celebrate and I want to thank our team for working diligently to get this out and get our city streets paved one street at a time. So that's that. Additionally, we've got a community calendar that we will, we will be sharing with the council. The the city, the the city clerk's office put this together. So we're really excited that we've got a community calendar now. So that way we can avoid different folks putting events on the same day. At least try. I'm not going to guarantee that's not going to happen. But at least this, this can help move things forward. You know, we've got some golf tournaments coming up. We've got the Run for the Wall coming up in May. We, we, we've got some, the women's club. You know, we've got, different memberships have been invited to put their, their organization's information on the counter. If anybody wants to put their organization on here, we can, we can go ahead and do that, send it to the city clerk's office. And, you know, again, we, we are small community and we, we want to celebrate the events that we do have. But we want to make sure we get the information out there so everybody can celebrate with us. And so that's the intent here. And we're just really excited about moving that forward. In my manager's report that I submitted tonight, there is a bid process being undertaken right now. So if you want to go buy some really neat stuff from the city of Needles and participate, you can go on our website. We do have many different items. There's about twenty-seven from trucks to tractors to condo lift. It's, it's as is. So if it runs, it runs. If not, it's up to you to do what you want with it. But basically, it's an opportunity for folks to, for us to declutter our space and for other folks.
Club.
Better our space.
Yeah, but the keys are really. Additionally, the Sage Motels opened up after fourteen years. That's.
That was.
This, that that project will accommodate thirteen units. Fourteen units that will allow folks to come in. He wants to be part of our VASH program for the public housing. So for the veterans housing, so he's a candidate to be able to, to move that forward. And again, we, we're really excited about that. And then the fire restoration project. We, we, we almost have it running. We're almost there. As soon as it starts running, we will take this out to these events that we've scheduled so that the community can donate towards the fire truck. It's about fifteen thousand dollars left with, to do the aesthetics. But to get it running, it's a couple thousand dollars. And so we, we've taken the private donations to put it towards. It'd be really neat to have a piece of our history, nineteen thirty-two, I believe. It's, it's older fire trucks. So we're really excited to be able to, you know, celebrate that. Now, in twenty twenty-two, Rite Aid had settled a thirty million dollar lawsuit for alleging pharmacies' contribution to oversupply of prescription opioids. And so at that point in time, they had to announce the closure of hundreds of stores, four hundred to five hundred stores. The number's still not solidified, as we found out just recently. And so yesterday, we were notified that even though Needles wasn't on any of the lists, the employees at Rite Aid were, were huddled up and told that they will no longer have a job after February sixth. And so we, we are losing our Needles Rite Aid store. Now, immediately, I, I sprung to action and it's a really two-pronged approach. One is we need to ensure that we've got the continuous care, ensuring continuity of care for their customers, which are our residents. And then two, bringing a retailer to help fill the space, to fill that void that we've got in the city. The immediate need is between now and February sixth to help facilitate. And so I, I did meet with the Rite Aid management yesterday and with their pharmacist, to pharmacist staff. They moved informed me that they have engaged a third-party company to oversee the transition of the prescriptions. And so they have assured me and, and customers will be notified within the week, within a week, that.
Or anything on that location.
It'll be up to the individuals. And so it hasn't been, it hasn't been solidified yet. We've heard rumors. But again, I don't want to put information out there without concretely knowing. Because there are, there are concerns about the Medicaid and Medi-Cal who are on the other side of the river. We, we did, with, with some research, we did identify that there was in Arizona CVS that did accept Medi-Cal, Medicare. So it's not, it's not that it can't be done. There might need to be some heavy lifting to help assist to get that. And we are doing everything we can to ensure that we're going to help provide the continual care for our residents. That's step one. Step two is to go and, and work hard and work with CVSs and the Walgreens to see if they want to utilize that space. And we're working actively with DMG, Michael Bracken.
No, because they, they could enter from either.
When they renegotiated the lease, that, that it was a favorable rate that was offered. And I don't know that for, I don't know what the rate was, but I just know it was favorable to help retain them. And we still couldn't retain them. And so again, it's unfortunate that Rite Aid was involved in this lawsuit that, that has had a spiral down effect down to our community. Again, that's not something that the city Needles has done. And so I want, when you, I've sent off bullet points so you all can share with residents. This isn't something that the people up here have done. This is, this is something that happened at a corporate level that we are, I mean, it doesn't make it any better. You know, it's still sour. But still, we need to find a way to help our, our residents have this transition and ensure continuing continuity with the existing customers. There are things that we are going to look at as a city of how we can provide services and how we can assist. But without knowing exactly where this other store is or who this other, I don't want to.
We thought about it.
And promise a bunch of things. But we do have a shopper shuttle and a medical shuttle that does go up in the Bullhead three days a week. And so if there is that opportunity, we will do that. Also, we can utilize the senior center as a telecommunication, telecommunications center to help assist seniors get escripts, because that's a new thing, help assist them with signing them up. So we're, we need to be, I even went as far as calling Bruce Pocock yesterday and see if he wanted to come out of retirement. And so I haven't got that phone call back, but, but I'm, but I know individuals in the crowd have also assisted us with trying to recruit Mr. Pocock back. I have talked to the local, the hospital. And the licenses just aren't there for, for our local hospital to participate. Again, that would be a long-term fix, not a short-term fix, even if they did participate later in the process. But right now, there's an immediate need to help ensure, we don't need to make any other improvements. Existing customers, and we're going to do whatever we can and share information and get the information out there. Because that's really all we can do is educate. But once we know that we're this new third-party company, and there are rumors, as I had mentioned, who's going to oversee the transition of these prescriptions, then we can act even more. But right now, our goal is to really get the information out there and long-term bring in a retailer so that we can get somebody in to help fill that void.
Do you think Walgreens or CVS is even a possibility considering they're, they're also closing stores around the country as well?
What was that?
Walgreens and CVS, they're also closing. They're not opening stores, but maybe we might be able to get them to buck their trend.
We're going to look at all options.
Yeah.
I mean, this might even, you know, a grocer slash pharmacy store. I mean, this might open up options. It's unfortunate to say, I mean, one door opens, a window closes, another door opens is the way I like to see life. So it's just, that's the, that's just the positive person that I am. But we, we will move forward. We're going to.
Make it a road or do anything where it's going.
Fist with this. But again, we need to inform and educate our residents so that they don't feel like they're not going to be getting access. And, and we're going to do whatever we can to assist. Again, this is a writing issue that's affecting us. But we need to, we're going to react and do whatever we can to help assist. And we do have an economic development fund for, for those out there that want to become a pharmacist or want to get engaged. I mean, we do offer economic development incentives, so folks will come. Non-cannabis businesses will open up a pharmacy. So if you know a pharmacist that is looking for a new place in Needles, send them, send them that way. We're, we're here to talk and help and cut through the red tape and get them where they need to go. We also reached out to our legislator, Garcia's office. And so I'm waiting for a phone call back. But we are doing whatever we can to help assist in our residents. And so with that, yes, ma'am.
One of the things that people need to be aware of during the transition is you may have a pharmacy up the river that can fill your prescriptions for you. But when it comes to a prescription that was written in the state of California, regardless, it was written in the state. And that would be class two, three, or, or four. Two, three, four, and five, two, three, and four, schedule medications. I'll tell my estrogen, it cannot be filled across the river. Go figure. I don't know why, but I do it mail order. So if you, if people have medications that are scheduled, that cannot be refilled, cannot be filled across the state line, which is the issue with needles, a big one. If you write it in Arizona, it cannot be filled at Rite Aid. If it's written in California, it cannot be filled at Walgreens because it's a schedule that doesn't allow it. You can get it mail-ordered. And so that's, that's what people need to look into if necessary for now is finding a mail order that might work for them on the medications that they're going to have problems with. I just want to suggest that.
All right. That concludes the solicitations.
Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Patrick. Okay, Councilmember Campbell?
I don't really have a lot. I feel like crap. I want to go to bed. And Patrick Martinez on the birth of their beautiful baby boy Wesley. And he made it all the way, all the way Wesley. He made it to the end. So he's here and we're excited. And thank you very much. And then I want to give my condolences to the Boda and Dressel families here in Needles, California. The Dressel children are the grandchildren of Bob and Paula Dressel and their mother and is the sister of my daughter Paige's father. And he died this week. So the children are all young and they, Bob's, I'm sorry, Steve's children are young. And they lost their dad this week. And so we have the families converging again to Needles for, you know, after Paula's funeral, they're coming now for Steve. So just keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. The Councilmember McCorkle?
Well, I'm not going to let her just be the only one because it was on my notes. So I did want to congratulate the Martinez family and to thank them for bringing another resident to Needles to help with headcount. Just kidding. Although we have a little while left until you can be a voter, but I do appreciate this. I don't have a lot. I do want to just back Patrick up on that. There's nothing that the city or council could do to keep Rite Aid here. It's not a city funding issue or rent issue as some of the things. It's not that the. It's not that the residents didn't shop local and spend money local. They could have been making, it could have been probably their top, you know, hundred store, and it still would have closed. So I just want to make sure that that's really put out there and buried into people's heads. There's nothing that can be prevented. It's a corporate decision that's affecting a lot of places. Just it's going to hit ours a little bit harder. And, you know, like Patrick said, we're going to work really hard at recruiting. Maybe, Patrick, you could talk to the current pharmacist there and see if he wants to open up his own place. But other than that, I don't have anything.
So, next person.
Okay. Councilmember Puck.
Congratulations. Had she waited two more days, it would have been on my birthday. Missed my birthday by two days. Yeah, I was unpleasantly surprised about Rite Aid, too. Is there any, another option to throw into the muddled mix here? You know, Needles Point used to have a pharmacy, and if there's any option to possibly reopen that, hijack the current pharmacist from Rite Aid, move them over. So try that. And it rained. Yay.
That's it. Okay. Councilmember Longbrake.
Yeah, we have some pissed-off citizens in our town. Really do about the Rite Aid, not only just because it closed, and I know it's not our fault. It's about everything, the Needles Point that closed down, the pharmacy there, the Rite Aid, the Bashes. Well, we could have had a Walmart here at one time. We could have had Home Depot here at one time. We could have had the London Bridge. All the stuff that we're not doing is what they're pissed off about. They're upset about it. And when this closed, I got almost a dozen calls between yesterday and today from people in this town that have said, this is not good. This is not good. Why hasn't the city been doing something? And I said, we are proactive and trying to get our businesses here. But why aren't you doing something? All you're doing is building parks and proving water stations, getting all these grants for that. Why don't you get grants for a pharmacy? Why don't you get grants for a grocery store?
On our business.
This is what I'm hearing from people out there. This is our citizens. This is our citizens that elected us. You know, I listen to them, and this is what I'm reporting back. I'm reporting back to what they tell me. I've come to the city with three different people that wanted to do business. One of them was Needles Point. They wanted to expand that store there. They want to expand it. I sent them to you and you and Rick Daniels. I don't know what happened with that. Other people that I've sent to the city, I've gotten reports of them. Well, they never followed up. So I know you're a new manager here, Patrick. I hope you're following up on what we're doing. We have a guy from ICSC that I, he wants to build a hotel here, and I gave him information, gave him information, and turned it over to Patrick. Hopefully, you're following up on that one, too. Hey? And it's important that we follow up on every lead that we get someone who wants to do business here. It's really important. Do not let it go. When you've got someone on the hook, pull it in because we're not getting no new businesses here. You know, we lost a restaurant, too, just recently. We used to have a Taco Bell. We used to have a Kentucky Fried Chicken. We used to have number two on Del Taco, you know, way back when.
To save Vincent.
Our Burger Hut down there is gone, too. You know, now the Red Dog Saloon's up for sale. Who knows if that's going to close or not? We need to retain what we have, or if not, build more. We knew we only had one pharmacy left in town here, and we knew it was in danger. And this shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. You know, it's gone now. You know, there's people here that are living on a limited budget. And they can't go to Parker to go get their medicines, if they're even allowed to, like Ellen said. You know, if a prescription is developed by a doctor in California, you can't go to Arizona to get the prescription. Certain ones you can, but not every one of them. That's over. Thanks.
Your honor, can I, am I allowed to say one more thing?
Sure.
I really, I'm sorry. I just want to, I want just to make a comment. We went down this road before with people coming forward and saying something because people get, we do, people do panic. But.
It could be a wide range.
Grocery store and the grocery store and the grocery store, what was coming in and what it wasn't. The bottom line is the city of Needles is not in business to put a grocery store in our town. We will accept one and write a permit for one, but we will not build one. That's not our job. That is not our function. We will not put a pharmacy in Needles. That is not our job. To seek and to look and to try and get businesses to come here, that's our job. But to do it, and why doesn't the city do it? What we as council members have to understand and give back to our constituents, the people who did vote us in, that the city of Needles' job is to run the city of Needles, to supply infrastructure, to water, electricity, to give building permits, to inspect those things, to get, help businesses get up and running, even providing an economic development fund incentive for businesses to come here. Now, I told people at the grocery store, if you have someone with a million and a half dollars sitting in the box under their bed, bring it to me, and we'll go get the permit signed, and we can get a grocery store started here. But unless someone wants to come here and wants to bring their money here, we can't force people. And we are for that, because that's not the function of city government. We do have a function. We do have limits, and it's hard to hear this, and I'm sure other people heard it this week, too. So it's really sad, and we'll work through this, but we'll continue to do the things that we do. But I want the people that vote for us to understand that, you know, we don't have the hospital anymore because we didn't need to have a hospital. It was a good reason. We do have the golf course that is owned by the city, but that's it. We, the city owning businesses is not what the city is in business for. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyway, I don't know, I'll be brief. I don't know if you've had time or not. I would like you, I encourage you to drive around the housing authority. It's just much improved. I've had several residents contact me, and they really appreciated the care they're getting there now. The grounds are looking better, and with the new windows and doors, it is a much updated improvement. Last week, Rainy and I attended the school board meeting with a proclamation. In January, San Antonio County School Board is recognized. It's another great volunteer position, and the school, you know, it was nice to sit there for the forty-five minutes and listening to all the work they're trying to do. They're trying to have a ninety-five percent attendance ADA. They need people in the seats, kids in the seats. So it was nice listening to all the programs that the Needles Unified does provide for our kids here. Art in the Park has been changed to March twenty-sixth and twenty, March twenty-second and twenty-third.
Thursdays and Saturdays.
That will be a display art show. We're encouraging high school students to participate. The River Valley Arts Guild has invited the city of Needles to join their art guild for the area, and they will in turn help support us in the arts. They want to start giving art lessons here in Needles, and they're very proponents of high school art. This year, to the Arizona High Schools, they're going to be giving out five thousand dollars in scholarship to art students. So that's another good thing for Needles that we're doing. Thank you very much. And again, I know Rite Aid is another difficult step for Needles, but Patrick today said, and he is working diligently, we will get past this, and we are trying to do the best for our citizens. Thank you. Have a good evening. Meetings adjourned.